All right, well, let's get started then. Welcome, everyone, to our first regional advisory committee workshop. It turned out to be a very exciting project for us all, but we've got to reorganize and get our regional master plan updated, so looking forward to that and getting off on a good foot this morning. We'll go around the table and introduce ourselves here in a minute, but I would like to introduce Michael Goldberg from Action Media, who's going to be, I guess, speaker of each of the layers, right? So I look forward to what he has to say.
I'm Cliff Center. I'm the executive director of the Rockingham Planning Commission.
I'm Lisa Henderson, executive director of the Workforce Housing Coalition of the Greater Seacoast. We're a housing, education, and outreach initiative with Action Media as a part of our approach.
I'm Phil Wilson. I'm a commissioner from North Hampton and select board member.
I'm Bob Brown, commissioner from L.A.
Peter Griffin, commissioner from Windham.
I'm Craig, our commissioner from Sandown and a standing board chairman and on the Shoreland Advisory Committee and the Exeter River Local Advisory Committee. So I'm excited about this. You're covering a lot of ground. A couple more on there. But, you know, I think a lot of what we're dealing with down here, the water quality, environmental, is a result of lack of mutual care. Any others? This is your manager, Rockingham County Councilor.
I'm Nora Distin, executive director of R E P C, Local Economic Development Agency, and in partnership with, we produce the region's comprehensive economic development strategy for the EPA.
I'm Barbara Kravitz. I'm a commissioner from Hampton, and I also work for the town of Steever, in the planning department. I sit on division committee for Hampton and the master plan for Seacoast as well, and on steering committee for R E P C.
Michael Goldberg, Action Media.
Julie LaBranche, Rockingham County Councilor.
Scott Molson of Hampton.
Roxanne Ryan, Rockingham County Commission.
Glenn Greenwood, Rockingham Planning Commission.
Ed Camo, representing Brofield, guest.
And for those of you that don't know, Glenn is also our project manager for this project.
Before Glenn starts, there was a couple of things that I wanted to just say to get us started. One is that this, one is really to thank you, both commissioners and non-commissioners, for being willing to serve on this regional advisory committee. Been very gratified with the response that we've gotten. We have about a dozen non-commissioner members that we've invited or planned to invite. This is sort of a work in progress, and I think everyone we've asked has agreed to sit on this. And I think Glenn will show a slide of that full committee as it exists to date. There are a number of people who weren't able to come today. It is an issue of finding the time, especially in the summer, in the daytime, that works out for people. But, so, the committee is not fully in place yet, but we wanted to take the advantage, take advantage of having Michael here. Michael is, has been, and is permanent at Action Media. Hi, John.
Yes, sorry. No problem.
We've just got started. Johnny Bovere from Penache Water Works has been started.
This is your very, most important.
And so, Michael's been hired by National Regional Planning Commission on behalf of all the regions to help us formulate an outreach and communications approach to the regional planning process that we'll be going through. And he's here now and has been here once before this summer doing these meetings with the regional planning commissions and their advisory committees or leadership teams to go through a workshop. And so that's why we wanted to call this meeting today, even prior to the fact that we're fully functioning as a regional advisory committee, just to take advantage of that. But I wanted to step back for just a minute for those of you who are not commissioners and have not really sort of been through this learning process about what the Granite State future is and what the regional planning update is, to bring you sort of up to speed with that. And Glenn is going to go through a fairly detailed sort of background about what the project is about, but a couple of things I wanted to sort of lead that with. And one is, just to step back a bit and really talk about what we are as an organization on Regional Planning Commission. We have a three-part mission. Part one is to work with our municipalities who create us as an organization under the state law, to work with them and provide technical planning assistance. And that's what we have done primarily through our history, and that's what our communities have, I think, appreciated most about the organization, to get that technical assistance. But we have two other parts of our mission. One is to help communities work together on regional problems. Local government is a wonderful thing, but sometimes there's a need to facilitate towns working together to solve problems that go beyond single towns. And that's part of why regional planning commissions were enabled in New Hampshire, to work on that. We more or less respond on that issue to what communities want us to do. We don't push ourselves out there and say, "We're going to solve your problems," but we are ready to respond when communities want to work together on an issue. And I think a good example is Stradman Exeter recently using us as a facilitator to start talking about sharing sewer and water services. And the third part of our mission is to do regional planning. And that's been a bit of a scatter shot thing in the past. We have, in the very early history of the agency, in the 70s, we had a comprehensive plan that was done when Charlie Tucker was the director of the Southeast Regional Planning Commission. And since then, we have updated pieces of the plan, we have done separate pieces, we've done transportation plan, we've done an open space plan, we've done housing needs analysis, we've done a water resources plan, but never in a sort of a comprehensive way. Part of the reason for that is that we don't get funded to do that, and we are an agency that gets dues from communities and then leverages that to get grant funds to do other work, mostly work that our communities have asked us to do. The regional plan funding sources haven't existed since the late 70s. And in 19, 2009, HUD, the EPA, and the DOT formed a partnership to support regional plan and community plan called the Sustainable Communities Initiative. There are two parts of it. There's local, there's individual community planning and regional planning. The nine RPCs got together two years ago and applied for funding to do regional plans. And we were turned down the first time and successful the second time. And so the nine, the nine RPCs in the state sort of pulled resources in doing this application and have received the funding to do this, really for the first time since the late 70s to develop a comprehensive plan, a regional plan for the region. So we're going to be able to, over the next couple of years, work on that third part of our mission, which ultimately, I think, will help communities do the first part of that mission, which is, again, provide the technical planning systems that they created us to do. So, the last thing I want to say is that because we spend most of our time and most of our effort working with individual towns on technical assistance, we are not the best in the world at doing public outreach and communications. But to do a regional plan requires good skills and a good effort in that regard. And that, and I think that's true of, you know, I think that ham-handedness sometimes with public outreach and engagement is something that I think all of us can do better at. And this is why I think this opportunity today to talk about the strategies, how we should do the outreach, how we should do the communication, how we should approach getting good input, good, from communities and other people in the region is a very welcome start, a way to start this process. So, again, thank you very much for your time and for being here, and I think it's going to be a good journey. So with that, I turn it over to Glenn.
Thank you. And can I just make sure everybody's signed in on the signing sheet correct?
Yeah.
Oh, I think Roxanne, perfect. Now, Scott, can I engage you to, can I make you sit in the corner and press the page change for me?
I can do that.
Or, you do one, it's fine.
No, totally.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I'll take that duty when Michael talks.
We lost our.
We don't know where our remote is. So we need to use people remotes.
We decided that remotes should not be small, they should be large.
They should indeed be.
And brightly colored.
Green.
And have a rattle.
Let me go right to that next slide, Scott. I don't want to take very much time on this project overview, actually, for two reasons. Most of you have already seen this presentation at some point, and the meat of what we're doing today is starting to get some input from folks on how they feel about the state of New Hampshire, their region in New Hampshire, what they do in New Hampshire, and what can perhaps be better in the future, in the future for New Hampshire. So I will go through this fairly quickly, but please feel free to stop me and ask any questions if there's something that I've said that has piqued your interest or just didn't make any bloody sense. First off, the reason that we are able to do this project, and Cliff alluded to it earlier, is because of a regional initiative with all of the planning commissions in the state of New Hampshire to apply to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for a Sustainable Communities grant. And the goal of our grant was to improve regional planning, and I think that with this, with this funding source, we will be allowed in a way I have not seen in the 25 years that I've been with the commission to accomplish preparing our regional, our regional master plan. So I'm very excited about it. The final products for the New Hampshire grant is nine updated regional plans, one for each region, and a policy framework to assist the state in developing their statewide development program. And that's a, I think that that will be very beneficial. And it's interesting that it will, to some degree, work from the bottom up in developing that statewide policy framework. So, next slide. In New Hampshire is, there are statutory requirements for the development of our regional plans, of local plans, and the state development plan. When you get a down moment in your busy lives and you want to, take a look at those R S As, and you can see the guidance that's given at the legislative level for the preparation of these plans. As you can see with that list of content for the plans, there has been an effort made to make those plans or guide those plans towards having consistent content so that you would be able to, you would reasonably be able to look at a regional master plan and see the same topics discussed that you'd see in a local master plan. And, and along the same lines, when the state development plan is completed, you'd be able to see those same sort of topics discussed in depth from the perspective of the state at that, for that state development. One of the, one of the driving forces with the Housing and Urban Development Program for Sustainable Communities is this idea of livability principles that serve to strengthen local communities and to provide inter-agency coordination in funding and products for, in support of communities. And so, from HUD's perspective, those six livability principles are principles that they would like and they expect to see reflected in our regional plan as we develop it. Now, coincidentally, as we go to the next slide, there are livability principles that have been established in the state of New Hampshire. And they are not, there isn't a one-to-one correlation between the two sets of livability principles, but they do strike at the same, the same idea that in order to have, in order to make efforts at sustaining and, in some cases, creating vibrant communities, the effort should really be taken to make sure that there's an interdependency within these broad areas of interest, to understand how they impact each other when you discuss any one of those, that when you look at settlement patterns or land use in a community, you really can't do that without thinking about the housing that exists there and the transportation choices that are available for the, within that community or within the region. And so there's, HUD expects, and we would have anyway anticipated including these principles within our own document. But it will be interesting to see the degree to which, over time, you see these kinds of ideas reflected in all three of those levels of planning, at the local level, at the regional level, and at the state level. Next one, Scott. As we go about preparing our regional plan, and I've got, I can't emphasize enough, and for those of, for those of you on the commission, you realize, because many of you sit on our regional master plan committee anyway, what we're, what this is all about is preparing our regional master plan. And one of the, one of the things that we want to ensure as we go about doing this project in cooperative nature with the other regional planning commissions, which we have never done, in the preparation of any of the master plan components for our regional master plan that I've worked on over the last 25 years, there's never been any intention or intent of working with the other regions in the development of their plans, no coordinated effort. We're all aware of what each other are doing, but we don't, we've never had resources that allowed us to actually convene, talk about our own individual plans as they impact one another. That's a real benefit from this, from this project. And as a, as a way of ensuring that we understand what's out there to be considered, there's an element of this process that looks at all of the statewide efforts that we can make ourselves aware of that are going on, that would impact the proper preparation of our regional plan. So some of those are listed here, and there's an ongoing process right now statewide with all the planning commissions to glean the best information from all of the resources that we can amass, so that we're all starting from the same place as a sort of a basic knowledge line of information statewide. So it's, it's actually very ambitious, but it's allowing us to talk to a lot of folks that we maybe wouldn't talk to as individual planning commissions, and it's allowing us to see how the impacts of some of these studies are different between the regional planning commissions, but nonetheless important. So the regional planning process, it's sort of been broken out in phases. What we're, what we'll attempt to do, phase one is establish the policy framework, both at the regional level for the individual plans, and setting up a guideline and a sort of a skeleton for that state development plan framework. Phase two is to conduct regional visioning in the actual planning process, and that's going to be done in a number of ways, some of which will be spoken to by Michael later. We have engaged U N H statewide to do some visioning exercises around the state for us. The goal really to be to include as many voices and as many viewpoints as possible, both within our region and around the state. And then phase three is the adoption of the regional plans, which is done individually by each of the regional planning commissions, and then the finalizing of that statewide development policy and framework for the preparation of the statewide development plan. So, to accomplish all this, there's a lot of coordination that's already underway. The project started officially first week of February, was it February 6th? And from that point, it's a three-year process, it's a three-year planning process. So we're, we're in it now for several months. There is a lot of, there are a lot of meetings that are going on, a lot of inventorying and data gathering that's taking place. And this is just a thumbnail sketch of some of the things that are, that are going on. And we're trying at every, at every opportunity to make sure that the folks that are invited to come to the table represent as many viewpoints as possible. If we can go to the next slide, Scott. These are, and this is kind of funny, I kind of want to skip ahead, but I'll, I won't. Within the, within the regional planning process, you see there, number one bullet, engage local partners, and then two, establish regional outreach strategy. We really are spending an awful lot of our energy making sure that we involve as many people as we can. You'll see around this table, if you're a commissioner, you see that there are faces that are unusual in some instances, but, but common partners in others, that's, that's going to be our M.O. for the entire, for the entire project. That phase of our planning initiative really starts in the fall, in earnest, but the engaging local partners part is ongoing now. So if we can go to the next slide. Phase three is statewide consensus. What a, what a very simple concept that is, huh? We will, at the end of our process, be doing nine individual regional plans within the overall framework, but that is stress, each of those adoption processes take place at the, at the regional level with their regional planning commission. And the goal is to make sure that there is some sort or some common framework so that, again, we are able to look at a regional plan from Lake's country and see that there are a lot of common elements to the plans that we've developed in the Seacoast or maybe Southwest, for instance. If we can go to the next slide. We're going to pass over that one, Scott, if we can. I'd like to spend a little time looking at this organizational structure. As you can see, when you've talked to individual staff members that have invited you to this process, it is an important process for us. We, when Cliff thanked you for being willing to participate, it was a serious thank you. This, this group will be looking at the development of our plan very consistently now for the next two and a half years, and it will be acting as a steering body and a sounding board as we go about preparing our plan. As you can see under that top block, the way we're constituting the committee is, in response to some of the comments we had very early on as we discussed creating the committee, we wanted to make sure that there was no ability that one of our communities could feel that they were disenfranchised in some way by the way that we constituted our advisory committee. So each of our member municipalities are authorized to send or appoint one of their commissioners from their towns to be the municipal representative on the regional advisory committee. At this point, we have not made that formal solicitation to the boards of selectmen. We have counseled our commissioners that if they're, if they have a personal interest in being on the advisory committee, that they should make that, that point known to their, their board of selectmen, because we will be sending a solicitation letter out very soon. Agency partners are, have already been invited. We have some representatives here today, and community leaders will be, will and have been reached out to to participate. And then you'll see the RPC staff, and throughout the process, there will be consultation with partners and probably professionals in various aspects of our subject topics that will be asking to participate on the regional advisory committee. So you will see a number of faces that are always on the committee, but we do envision that there will be some folks that come and go as the topic areas that we discuss fall into the range of their expertise. Roles and responsibilities. Now, at the statewide, this is, this is the grouping at the top of the statewide framework. And so there is an executive committee that's made up of partners and the regional planning commission executive directors, and an advisory committee that has been established or has begun to be established, and the technical advisory subcommittees that are actually well into their work by now, that are meeting in order to determine the most relevant information in each of the different sub-areas and, and national plan sections that will be developed. And, like I say, those, those subcommittees have been meeting since the beginning of the summer. Next page, Scott. This is the, just a matrix of the roles and responsibilities that's for our commission in particular. And you'll see the middle section of regional advisory committee, that's, that's you folks. That's who we are, that's who we are today as convened. And you'll see that under your responsibilities, you'll be acting on behalf of the commission for virtually all of the tasks that we, that we speak to in the preparation of our regional plan. I would expect that anytime we're at a juncture where we want input and guidance, this is the group that we will come to to get that guidance. There will be an avenue for each of the chapters that we have prepared to be reviewed by the regional advisory committee. We will, we anticipate that you'll actively participate in our process and, and in those outreach meetings that we have throughout the region, if there are topics of discussion at particular plans, at particular planning meetings, we would love your participation in those regional meetings. You will be responsible for tracking progress of the project and also recommending, recommending the document to the full commission when that time, when that final time comes. Next, next slide, Scott. And next steps. We are, as you see, right in the midst of doing that first one, establishing a committee. There is a necessity for us to create a regional equity engagement committee that will help us in our outreach. And it's a, it's an interesting committee because it is, it is one of the, one of the HUD requirements, and it's one of the big differences to our planning process from any of the planning processes I've been involved with in the past. It requires that we reach out to a much broader scope of stakeholders than we normally think of when we do a planning process within the RPC. It's very common for us to get myopic in those people that we seek counsel from as we develop our plan, because they're the same folks that we work with sort of day in and day out, month in and month out, in doing land use and environmental planning and transportation planning within our region. But with this project, we will be responsible for reaching out to many different groups than we typically do, and I, I think that that will only benefit our, our end planning results. So it's fairly exciting, I think, to the staff members here, the commission. We're working cooperatively to establish outreach strategies that include things like our cooperation with the University of New Hampshire. like our cooperation with the University of New Hampshire, the KC Institute, to do listening sessions statewide, and some are earmarked for our region. We'll be doing regional visioning sessions throughout the next year to see, to receive as wide a breadth of input as we can. We're right now determining different places that we can meet with populations of our communities in informal settings. We're attempting to set up a table next week at Kingston Days in Kingston, thinking about maybe hitting some of the old home days that are in some of our communities in later part of, of this summer, to, to just get as much input and raise the consciousness of folks in the region that this process is going on so that they'll, so that when they're asked or when they see something that, that actually asks for their participation, it won't be a project that they know nothing about. Next slide. Here is our proposed regional advisory committee makeup as it stands now. You'll see we have the expectation that there'll be one commissioner from each of our communities, and then one or more folks represented from the groups that you see below listed there. And it's not, I don't want to lead anyone to believe that it's set in stone. As I said earlier, it is anticipated that although we will have a core group of folks that represent a broad enough spectrum, that their interests should be heard consistently, we will see some folks come and go within the committee that are there just for very specific areas that we'll be developing and discussing within our regional plan. So, as you see, some folks represented here, Mr. Lawrence here, and Laurel's here, and Lisa's here. Is that Jeremy who just came in?
Yes.
I've never met Jeremy, but I heard he was a younger guy, and he's, he's the only younger guy I see sitting around the table. So, I think it must be Jeremy. So, as we, as we continue to, to develop our thought process on, with this, with this project, there will be changes, I think, to that listening, but they'll be for the better, and there will be an effort to get as many voices heard as possible. Now, I think that on the agenda, I, we actually talked, said that we've had a specific roles and responsibilities section. We've really, we've really covered that job. And at the risk of taking any more of Michael's time, I think I would like to turn it over to you, unless anyone has any questions at all about what we're hoping to accomplish here.
Are you looking for recommendations from those open spots, or are you?
Absolutely. We would love to have input of that nature. All right? Thank you very much, Michael. Okay, I will sit down and, and switch pages for Michael.
Okay. Thank you for your time this morning. Action Media is a consult, consulting firm based in Minnesota, who work around the United States with nonprofit organizations and governmental entities, in helping people who are working on some kind of a community activity to say what they mean and to speak in clear terms that help them move their, their efforts forward and help their listeners understand what they're talking about. Most of our work has to do with the built environment, land use, and housing, and transportation, regional planning, and the natural environments. And, so you're going to put that on slideshow mode? Are you going to put that on for the slideshow show? You know, over the top where it says slideshow from the beginning?
One's not certified to do that. I guess I have to be certified. Right here. That's the one.
Okay. We do a lot of research around the country, listening to ordinary people who are, who vote and who follow the news. That's a subset of the general public that we invite into our research. And we always make sure in these small group discussions, sixty, ninety-minute focus group discussions, that each group includes people of different ages, different demographics, incomes, educational backgrounds, political perspectives. So, it's a mixed group of people who are in a room with people who may not be like most of the people who they know, to find out how people think about things. I have been very careful over the twenty years I've been doing this work with Action Media to protect my ignorance. All of my clients, all of you, are very, very well-informed about your areas of expertise and your specialties. The planners have put a lot of time and education and thought into how to do this work. But even though I spent, I've spent a lot of time with people working on all these issues, I've been careful not to get too well-educated about them because I want to be able to continue to add value to the people I work with. And the value that I add is this, if you can explain it to me, and if you can explain it to your mom, gee, Glenn, please, why don't you let me do the slides?
I guess I have to. What did I just do?
I don't know. You kind of, you kind of blew my punchline here a little bit.
It's all yours, Michael.
Sure. The, if you can explain it to me in terms simple enough so that I really get it, then you can explain it to the people who matter to you, right? Including the selectman, or the newspaper reporter, or the person who's got the resources that are needed to be applied to whatever it is. And so, that's why we do this, this focus group research, too, is to find out how regular people think about things. And this is just a little illustration to show you why, why we do qualitative research. Everybody in the room immediately can see what that says. It's not a puzzle to figure out. Your brain puts it together for you because that's how our brains work. We take a little piece of information and we create a complete picture out of whatever information we have. And we make that complete picture, we base that complete picture on what we already know to be true from our experience. For instance, we all know how the English language works, and we really know there's only one thing that that could say. Everybody can read community development up there, even though most of the letters are obscure. And everybody does this at all times. And the, one problem is that we're often wrong about what that complete picture really is, because we're applying what we already know and making a whole picture out of a little bit. I'm sure everyone's had the experience of trying to explain something to somebody who disagrees with you, who has a different way of looking at it, and you lay it all out for them step by step, very carefully, fact, 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 and they're nodding and listening to you, and then when you're done, they go right back to whatever wrong-headed idea they had at the beginning, and you get frustrated, and you say, what's wrong with them? Why can't they get it? You know, what's wrong with that person? That's the wrong question to be asked. The correct question to ask is, what's wrong with the way that I'm talking about this that's keeping them from hearing what I'm saying? Because what you have to remember is that it's not a function of people's education or viewpoints or background or anything like that. It's a function of being human. We all do this. This is what I consider to be the scary part of this illustration. If you look again, you, what does your brain tell you that says? Even though you know that it doesn't say that, you can't keep your brain from doing this. This is how our brains work. So, it's very important what we, how we start, what we, what we present at the beginning. And it's very important to be aware of what's the story that's already in people's heads, what, what pictures and, and information experiences are, are leading them to form that complete picture. And so, I go around the country explaining a few things to the experts that I work for, and one of them is that the facts are meaningless. I was a reporter in the first half of my career, so please don't misquote me on this. I'm not saying the facts are unimportant. I'm not saying you can make them up. I'm not saying you don't need facts. Facts are crucially important. But the facts are literally meaningless. They contain no meaning. The meaning always comes from the stories that we tell about the facts. You can always get into a situation where there's worrying facts, you know, oh, it's eighty percent of this. Well, yeah, but it's thirty-two percent of that, you know, and, and it doesn't matter because everybody is working from a story based on their experience about how things go together. So, we have all these words that are terms of art that are used by people who do the kinds of work that the staff, the regional planning commission do, and people who are working on different aspects of it. These are words that I see everywhere, and some of these words now are encoded in governmental policy or in the names of grant programs or something like that. We've done research with focus groups around the country about these words, and I can tell you that none of these words are helpful. None of them really, really get anything across. All of them have different ways that they confuse people and that they, that they lead things off in different directions. They're all very abstract, if you think about them. And very often I find, you know, one of my jobs is to say to my clients, well, I don't understand that. What do you mean? Very often I find that my clients themselves don't know what they mean by these words. So, that's why I carry around this little illustration of, of a really, really effective piece of communication. It's one that you've all seen before. It's, it's sequenced in a very logical way, one, two, three. It combines pictures and words. It gives me the information that I need to begin and where I'm going to come out. It gives me different options on what to do if I have a nine-inch pan or a seven-inch pan. It's all very useful. It's a very, very effective piece of communication. The thing of it is, you'll never walk into any grocery store anywhere in the world and find this side of the box facing out. You're always going to see this side facing out, right? Now, the people who make this stuff, they're not trying to put one over on us. They know that we know that there are no brownies in the box. But they also know, or they're working from the assumption, that everybody is always walking around with at least a low level of desire for a brownie at all times. And their job as a communicator is to elevate that level of desire that we already have up to the point where we'll reach up onto the shelf and put the box in our basket. Then later, when we get home, there's plenty of time to read the recipe. We'll read the back of the box when we need this information. If we don't put the box in the basket, we're never going to need the information, okay? People that I work for mostly have worked very, very hard and are able to serve their, their neighbors, their, and their fellow citizens, have, because they've worked very, very hard at figuring out the recipes. But to be effective communicators, we have to get a lot better at articulating a brownie. What do we get? Why do I need a recipe? What is it that I'm going to get at the end? So, that's where, that's where we, where we focus our efforts in terms of communicating about a grand state future and this project. In the research that we've done, as I said, we always are careful to make sure each small group includes a range of perspectives and experiences, of political views. In any given place, we'll, you know, frequently make sure that each, each group of eight or nine includes folks from the suburbs and the city, or from the small towns and the central town, whatever it is. And we do that because what we're trying to figure out is what do people have in common? What do they share in terms of what they expect out of public decisions about how to use public resources? And we've found that indeed there are some things that are very, very widely shared, no matter who you are or where you're from, that most people agree on. One is that when we make these kinds of decisions, we ought to look at the big picture, not just look at things in narrow little segments. We've got to be thinking about, what is this going to, how is this going to affect what happens ten miles down the road or ten years out from now, right? This is something that citizens think about. They also believe that we will do better if we can get all the options on the table. They have the experience, many of the folks who have attended our focus groups have had the experience of attending public hearings and public meetings of various kinds, and they generally report that the whole thing was a show, that really the people running the meeting had pretty much decided what was going to happen, and that they were just holding a meeting because they were, you know, covering, they were covering themselves and they were required to, because they wanted to look like they wanted to hear from us, but really they didn't want to hear from us because somebody came along with some proposal, and the meeting's about that proposal, but nobody said, but what about the other things we could do? We've got to get all the options on the table. And they say, whatever decisions get made, they should benefit the community as a whole, not some narrow slice of the community, not people who happen to know the commissioner or the selectman, should benefit everybody. And that these, these decisions have to be fair. And, you know, when we're in common parlance, usually when we say be fair, what we mean to say is, it's got to be fair to me. But actually, in public discussion, and as these voters are describing this, what they really mean is, all of the different interests have to be heard and respected, really heard, and respected and taken into account and considered as we come to some kind of a group decision about what we're going to do with our shared resources. It's got to be fair. And this is the most important one. It's got to be based on what people actually say, think, and want. Anywhere you go in the United States, you can ask this random group of people who vote and follow the news to describe some change in their area, and they will describe both good changes and bad changes, but they get a little more worked up on the changes they don't like. And then you ask, well, why did it come out that way? Why, you know, why was this mistake made? They say, because they didn't listen to the people. If they had listened to the people who were going to be affected by the decision, we would have made better decisions. It would have come out better. These are people who vote, remember. It's not everybody. It's people who are, are engaged enough to show up at the polls. And they're idealists. They're maybe not too pleased with what we've got, but they do believe in the idea of self-governance. Americans who vote really do believe in democracy, and we think that if we are self-governing people who can decide for ourselves what we're going to do with our shared resources and shared opportunities and shared problems, that we're going to wind up making better decisions. This is research, as I say, that we've done over the last eight-plus years in many places, including here in New England. And I have a high degree of confidence in this result, not only because I've heard these same things place after place, but also because I've worked with folks who have used some of these insights as a way to organize their communications, and it's worked, right? So, the news for this project, for Grand State Future, is that your fellow citizens, your constituents throughout the, throughout the region are very receptive to this. They have a picture in their heads already based on some of these things that make them want to hear this kind, about this kind of project, about a project that is going to get all the options on the table, look at the big picture, listen to the people who are going to be engaged, and that are designed to benefit the community as a whole, is a very receptive audience for this. And that audience is made up of most of the people in the area who, who vote anyway. So, we've, we've kind of boiled these, some of these findings down to a simple set of values that we recommend that you use as the basis or foundation for all communications. Top of the list is participation for democracy. So, what do you think? Shared benefits and fairness. These are values that are very, very broadly applied by people who may disagree about many, many public questions. They're very broadly applied to the process of making public decisions. And then when people start thinking about specific decisions or a specific development or option, there are additional values that are very widely shared, values of security, of choice, of convenience. Conservation here means not wasting stuff. It applies not only to water and air and forests and other natural resources, but conservation of our tax money, conservation of the efforts we've already put in, conservation of those beautiful old buildings downtown. It means not wasting stuff. And community is a value that is very strongly felt in parts of the country like this that are, you know, where there are smaller communities and people have an opportunity to interact. That value of community is widely shared, but in many parts of the United States is viewed as an aspect of nostalgia, something that we'll never get back, which is kind of sad to me, but, but for people who actually experience that sense of community in their lives, it's an extremely important, extremely important value. So, I was asked, what is a grand state future? Here's what I would say. Grand state future is an opportunity for the people in this town, in this area, to participate in a really serious and sustained conversation with each other, to tell what is most important, what do we value, and how can we keep it? To think through, what are our opportunities, and how can we increase our economic opportunities? And how do we want to plan for the future? And in this discussion that we're all going to be having as neighbors, we're going to have the opportunity to find out what we ourselves think, because we're going to get to say what we think, and to find out what our, what our neighbors think, too, and then to talk it through and think through what do we share and how do we go. I'm a regular citizen. I'm not somebody who's, who has been generous enough to serve as a commissioner or a regional planning commission. planning commission, or to stand for public office or anything like that. I've got my own problems. I'm not looking for trouble. But I'm just a regular person, right? And I've got to say, as a regular person, the promise that I'm going to get a master plan doesn't do a whole lot for me. I don't, I don't really, I don't really even want a plan. I have enough trouble remembering what I planned for myself for today, you know, right? A plan is not going to be it. But, like all of my neighbors and all of your neighbors, I really love where I live. I really care about where I live. I really care about what's going to happen in the future. And I, and I do have an interest in how can we keep the things that are most important to me and finding out what, how important those things are to my neighbors, you know? Am I the only one who finds it? I live in the state of Minnesota. I find it really kind of a problem that most of our rivers aren't safe to eat the fish out of, or to have the kids swim in. I think that's really, really a problem, right? I'd like to make sure that I'm not all alone in that. I'd like to know if my neighbors think that way too. And then think about, well, what could we do about that? Um, so, uh, so in terms of community outreach and the task of the advisory committee, of get, talking to people about this project, about a grand state future, what I would urge on you, what I would have as my own goal for, of objective for this meeting this morning, is for you to be able to say to whoever you meet, whether they're a highly informed, uh, very, you know, community-engaged citizen, or somebody who's not at all community-engaged, or somebody you chat with when you run into them at their coffee shop or a convenience store, uh, your kids, your parents, your neighbors, whoever it is, to be able to say to anyone you meet, "Oh, have you heard about this project, Grand State Future, that we're doing at, at this regional level? This is about getting a sustained discussion going about what we value and how can we keep it, about how we can increase our opportunity, about what we want for the future." It's an opportunity for all of us to talk to each other, listen to each other, and think those things through, so that public decisions, when they get made, reflect those things. Public decisions, you all know, public decisions are being made every day. For most of us regular citizens, that's a very obscure process. I mean, you can look at the, you look at the notice, you know, the newspaper public hearing, you know, come and, or you could come, or you could subscribe to, uh, governmentoversight.com and, you know, watch videos of meetings, but, you know, really, most of us aren't going to do that. We, you know, these public decisions are getting made and, um, then we really only think about them in terms of the results. We live with whatever those results are. Sometimes we're not so happy with that, right? Uh, so this project is one that I feel very strongly, and I'm very proud to be engaged as a consultant to this project, because it's based in this idea that we're going to make better decisions if the people who are going to be affected aren't involved in those decisions. And if the governmental entities that have the responsibility for figuring out how to use our, our shared resources, um, make those decisions based on the way people are thinking about what people want. Uh, you know, the planners, um, as I say, have worked very hard and have put a lot of, a lot of effort into their education of their specialty. And we are all well-served by their expertise, their skills. But they do have a challenge of being able to get out of that mode, breaking into just, you know, the way the rest of us look at stuff. It's a challenge and the reason that the regional advisory committee really ought to include citizens who are not formally engaged in the regional planning commission is so that they can add that perspective, so that they can say, you know, in terms of the people who are developing housing, for example, and people who want to move into that housing, "Well, this is the way the people that I work with look at it," you know? So that we have that, that, that experience. And that's how we organize the communications around Grand State Future. This is, um, the logo of the project, um, and, uh, this logo actually, uh, represents quite a bit of work by, first, the members of the executive committee, and then the commercial, um, graphic designer who was hired by the project, uh, to develop the logo. And I think it's quite important, not because, not because it's an appealing image, which I believe it is, but I think it's important to think about this project as really kind of needing a brand. And by that I mean, as having a, an implicit promise, containing a promise or a meaning to the customers, in this case, everybody who's a citizen. Um, and, and the promise is this, that this is about the future that we share and that it's based on listening to what people in our communities are concerned about and thinking about. That's really the content of the brand for Grand State Future. It's not like we want anybody to, it's not, it's not like, um, it's not like Piridel B, you know? Their, their brand is, our chocolate's the best by ours. It's not a brand in that same sense. But every brand sort of contains a, a, a story that we want people to have fixed in their heads, and that's the story of Grand State Future, that this is about thinking about what we value, figuring out how we can keep it, how we can increase our opportunities and our, and our prosperity, and how can we plan for the future so that it's, so that what's great now is even better for our kids and even for our children's children. That's, that's the promise, that's the story. And so along those lines, uh, we've developed a series of ways of talking about this. Now, mine is not the kind of communications firm that says, "Stay on message, everybody say these words." I don't really think that that's best when we're talking about social issues. We're really kind of better off using different words that are applicable to the speaker and to the audience, you know? It's not that, it's not that any of the messages that we've recommended, we expect people to memorize and parrot, but they're all based in the same set of simple values and the same perspective that I just described to you. And there's a handout in, in your packet called, uh, Key Messages for Communicating About the Regional Plan, that I would refer you to, uh, as a way of just thinking about conversation starters. Um, and here are a few of these ideas, um, that we, you know, things that we know that people are concerned about, like our taxes and our kids and, um, and about the specific places. One of the reasons that I wanted to do this meeting, uh, in nine different locations, this is the age of nine, is because the story's a little bit different in each place. The concerns, the challenges, the opportunities, the culture are, is a little bit different. And it's got to be based on that place. It can't be coming either from, you know, a state committee or from anywhere else outside of town. It's even different within the region, of course, and we have to be sensitive to that and recognize that there isn't like one thing that's most important to everybody in the region. In some places, there's one thing that's more important to most of the folks than others, so. So, uh, uh, but here is one that I do want to mention. Um, you know, uh, you can go anywhere in, in America today, walk into any group of strangers at a coffee shop or a bar, and immediately get that group of strangers very much enjoying an animated discussion about how bad government is, about how it's incompetent, how it's corrupt, how it's not fair, how our politicians are just thinking of themselves, how it's blah, blah, blah. You can get that conversation started anywhere. It's easy to do, right? But if you walk into that same place with that same group of people and get people talking about the roads and the highways and the bridges, and whether or not we have access to broadband internet, and where's, how, what kind of condition the schools are in and the hospitals, and that same group of people very quickly is going to start talking about how we really need to invest in this stuff, we really need to be taking care of this stuff, because our businesses depend on it, our families depend on it. It's obvious that, you know, we're not going to, it, it can't be done privately. I mean, it can only be done collectively. A road that connects me to you is not going to be something that I'm going to build or you're going to build. It's going to be something that we're going to have to build together. So, that, you know, that same group of people, in other words, when they're thinking about infrastructure, are thinking in very positive ways about how can we function successfully with self-governing people, instead of thinking of, from the perspective of people in the audience, as we all are for the TV televised political debates, where in the audience it's easy to say, "That's a crummy show." Well, you know, okay, it's a show, that's a crummy show. If we're not in the audience, if we're actually members of the community, then it's, you know, then the same group of people are thinking positively about what should we do to solve our problems? What can we do? So, infrastructure is very important to be talking about, thinking about. And safety and security is always in people's minds. Property values are very important, and eliminating government waste and getting the wholesale of our tax money, all of these things are addressed in that, in that memo. And what I would encourage you to do is to read through that and think about different people who you converse with, who you have contact with. Think about which of those kinds of ideas might be of importance to them, or turn any of them into questions too. You can start a conversation with any of those recommended messages just by putting a question mark at the end of them, you know, rephrasing them that way, and finding out what, where people are at, how concerned they are, how interested they are. This is the opening step of, uh, the communications program for Grand State Future. Um, and it's also crucial, I think, and this is, uh, again, a little bit of a, of a shift from the way the planning commissions, which are accountable to the municipalities and towns in their region, a little bit of a shift for thinking about how do you go about assembling a master plan? Because, uh, my premise and really the idea behind this, this project is that we're all experts in our own lives. When I get people, strangers, together in focus group settings to talk about growth and development issues, you know, we, we schedule them. We have 90 minutes for each one, and it's sometimes difficult to get people out of the room, you know, a lot of stuff talking about it, because we all really care about where we live. We have a lot of experiences about where we live or other places we've visited. We have a lot to say about it, you know? And although we may not really know how to calculate vehicle miles traveled, VMTs versus whatever the other part of the ratio would be, um, we, we sure know, you know, how much we have to work to adapt to traffic or change our plans to be able to get where we need to go. And we, and those of us who have had the experience of having a choice, having more than one way to get someplace, have, you know, exercised that choice based on our own interests and needs. Uh, we're also all experts in this, and we need to be thinking about our constituents as being the people who live in these towns and in this region, um, and who, and who work in these towns and in this region, as being the experts who are going to guide this process. Not everybody's going to come to meetings, of course. Not everybody's going to participate in scenario planning sessions, as draft elements of the plan are developed. Not everybody's going to put the time into reading them. But that doesn't mean that those people are cut out of the process or can't participate in the process. A city councilor friend, a city administrator friend of mine on the West Coast, um, has pointed out that input is not the same thing as participation. There's not so much input after looking for it. It's really their participation, their engagement. Or another way to think about it is that, uh, it's not so much that we want to be good at messaging, we want to be good at communicating. Here's the difference. A message is kind of like a, an industrial model, right? Okay, I crafted my message and now I'm going to deliver. Here, I've messaged you. And now, whether or not he gets it and picks it up is not really my problem, that's up to him, right? That is not, that's the opposite of communication. In order to communicate to you, you have to do some other work. I mean, we both have to be involved with it, right?
No.
So, that's basically my presentation to you. I want to take the rest of the time, I know somebody else here really wants to take the rest of the time to, um, hear from you about how can we move this forward. Uh, just one other thing I want to show you too, uh, which is that oftentimes communicators make the mistake of leading with what's most important to them, and the guys who put this sign up have to wear heavy gloves, you know, because it has really sharp edges and they can slice their fingers up, so, you know? We don't want to, we don't want to do this, right? Instead, we want to, we want to talk about the things that those folks are talking about and thinking about and caring about. And to do that, we've started, we've got a few things in motion. Uh, the first communications, um, uh, public communication effort of this project is going to be in the form of some little old-school, low-tech cardboard boxes that we're going to put out around the region. How many are you going to get here?
I think we're going to get thirty.
Thirty boxes that are small, and that can be put on a, a counter, a shelf top somewhere. And, um, uh, and then can be moved from place to place, right? I'm going to put out these boxes and they're going to look like, they're going to be just a little box with a slot in the top for a card and a little graphic on top saying, you know, "What's your vision for where you live, work, or visit in New Hampshire? Use a comment card." Uh, or we're also going to have a QR code on the boxes so that people who want to just scan it in and, and type in their responses online can do that. Um, and a little card that says, "Here's what I love most about this place, here's what could be even better." And if, and the option to put down your name and address and email if you want more information, although you don't have to do that to put it on, put it on the card. All of these responses are going to be collected, uh, they're going to be entered, you know, yeah, they're going to be collected in a standardized way around the state, uh, so that we can share these responses back out with the people who have, who live in the area. Um, if you do your QR code, you'll see the questions, and then very soon you'll start to see what other people have said. And then when we have our website published, that is a statewide Grand State Future website, prominent on the homepage will be some of the comments that we've heard from folks, uh, which, if you click over to it, will take you to all of the comments that we've heard from folks, which will also be searchable both by geography and by content area, keyword, you know, if you want to look up, you know, transportation or buses or, or whatever it might be. Um, and, uh, and an opportunity again to put in your comments, you know, once you're on the, on the website. The questions are going to get a little more specific, obviously, as the process goes along, you know, "What do you like best? What could be better?" Those are pretty good questions, but you can't exactly form a plan around them. You can get some ideas though, about where people are at, and because these cardboard boxes, uh, are so portable, um, they're going to create a number of opportunities for us. The first and in my mind most important is the opportunity that's created when somebody, probably from the staff of the planning commission, or maybe from those of you working with them on the advisory committee, somebody's going to walk in, walk into someplace with this box and cards and a little brochure and say, "Can we set this box on your countertop?" And the person who's in charge of that space is going to say, "Well, what is it?" Somebody, whoever's carrying that box had better be ready to answer that in a way that makes some kind of sense to the person asking the question. Here's how I'd suggest you answer it. This is a way to start a broad public conversation about what we care about most and how we can plan for our future. We're just inviting people to just let us know what they think. There'll be more later, but this is our start, right? It's going to be very important to be able to get something like that to the person who, who controls the space, who gets to say yes or no about the box, because if they say yes, someone's going to walk into their place and say, "Oh, what's this?" And if they say, "Oh, I don't know, it's some kind of federal grant that the regional planning commission is..." Well, then there's no point. We might as well just stay home, right? Um, but then also the boxes are going to create the opportunity of going in different places, like if we put it in a lot, in a, in a library, we're going to get a different kind of, uh, folks in response than if we put it in a high school, or then if we put it in a laundromat, or then if we put it in a beauty parlor, or... We've done this as a technique, actually media has, in several places around the country. And we have no prediction to make here about how many responses you're going to get on 35 boxes, whether you're going to get 70 responses or 3,500 responses. I really don't know. I don't really think it's that important. There's nothing scientific about it anyway. Um, but we do know from our experience that mostly it depends on the kinds of places that you put them in. If you put it someplace where people talk to each other, like a beauty parlor or a barber shop, you get a lot of responses. If you put it someplace where people pretty much stick to themselves, like a library, you tend to get fewer responses, unless you have a librarian who's kind of promoting it, you know, saying to people, "Hey, do this," you know, Dr. Drew and Jill. Um, so, we're starting with that. And the general press releases are waiting until we have some kind of a story to tell, because newspaper reporters like to have stories. Well, the story is, these boxes have gone out because the regional planning commission is starting a project to think through, to find out how people in this area think about the future of the area, what they really want, and what they value the most, and what they, what they want to keep. And they're starting by putting these boxes out in a number of different places. You should look for them, but if you don't see one, you should check out this website and participate that way. And, uh, then the project's going to continue and we're going to be asking more questions and getting more people involved, so. That's, that's the, uh, that's the publicity we're all about, you might say, for Grand State Future. Um, and we'll have those boxes, I think, by, at least by the end of next month. Is that what, is that what you've been sold on?
I, I've heard the end of this month, but I hope to use one in Kingston, so I'm hoping the end of this month.
Yeah, I, I...
You've heard different names about, have you?
I think they're just getting to the printer now, so.
Well, that's too bad.
Yeah, well, you'll have to improvise, I guess, and do the equivalent, I think.
Yes.
Now, what's the timeframe for, uh, the, this box outreach?
Well, um, we could continue to use the boxes really as long as folks in the community, as long as the advisory committee thinks it's worthwhile. We'll get them out as soon as we can. We had hoped to get them out in July. I expect that actually, when we scheduled this meeting, to be bringing the box to show you. Um, we'll get them out as soon as we can. Uh, we can move... We can move them around, you know, there's thirty-five boxes for the region, how many different communities within the region?
Twenty-six.
Yeah, so, you know, different people are going to do different things. In some of the larger geographies, they're going to put a whole bunch of boxes in one corner of the region for a week or a week and a half, and then move a whole bunch to another corner, so there's a greater density of number, and to collect the information. And this is a way that anybody can participate, the card's really simple. We anticipate that the volume of response, again, is going to go up considerably as the project continues with online responses. It's just simpler and it's just easier for people to, to, you know, to participate, but we want to have some non-online approach for folks who aren't online. And another thing about the boxes is you can take them somewhere, like you can take them to the high school for one class, or you can take them to a senior center, or someplace where folks don't get to, you know, don't get out a lot, you know, and bring it to them. Or you could even, if you're invited to, as I hope you will be, make sure you get to be invited to speak to service clubs like Rotary's or the Alps, you can bring the box along, explain to them what it is, and say, and here's something you could all do for us, is, here, I'm passing these cards out, you know, just let us know what you think. Yes?
I have to go, but we're in the know of our master plan work, and working with Julie, and we did something very similar with the survey monkey and the input, and it's just really impressive how pretty much unified the respondents were. You know, we had a few outliers, but it was reassuring to see, wow, you kind of care about the same thing, you know, it wasn't a whole town, but probably out of ninety-seven or a hundred and three respondents, there's probably four outliers, so...
Yeah, that is really encouraging, I find that, too, and if all you, if the only, if your only information about your neighbors, about your fellow citizens, is coming from the news media, you'd have no idea how much was shared, how much we have in common, because it doesn't make a real big news story. Is this true? Yes?
At the end of the process, is there a provision as to how we can engage our elected officials? Because we have a situation in New Hampshire now that's really pretty visible, where there are initiatives to kill absolutely everything that this organization represents. Didn't happen, but this, we have a election coming up in a few months, and so much of what we're doing, and will continue to do, is contingent on who's elected, and how they, when they go off to the planning circuit, are they going to react to the community?
You're referring to the state legislative proposal that we eliminate regional planning commissions in New Hampshire?
Among other things.
Yeah, well, in terms of this project, I would say the answer, in terms of this project and my role in it, I should say, you know, as a consultant to it, I would say the answer is no. There isn't a specific plan relating to communication to elected officials. For one thing, the regional planning commissions themselves are a servant to those elected officials, that the, you know, that the planning commission is accountable to its municipalities. Those elected officials are servants to their constituents. If their constituents think that they, that we'd all be better off if we don't plan for the future, if we don't pool any resources for doing that, if their constituents actually think that, then it really doesn't matter what the regional planning commission thinks, you know, then those servants elected to serve the will of the people need to make sure that we don't plan for the future, or think about how to make best use of our shared resources. But my own belief, based on the conversations I've had with a few thousand voters over, you know, in these focused, focus group discussions, I believe that's not actually what folks think. And that, that if people are given an opportunity to think about the things that are important to them, and what they value, and to think about how we can make sure we keep that, and how we can increase our opportunity, and how we can plan for the future so that things are even better than they are now, that they'll want to engage in that process, and they'll have plenty to say, they have a lot to say. And if they start saying it, then their elected officials are going to be hearing it. And if their elected officials are going to be hearing it and are doing their jobs, then they're going to be figuring out what should we do then in the policy arena that would meet these needs, right? So it's not like the regional planning commission is going to be advocating for some specific policies, you know, related to this stuff. Once there's plans, then if there's agreement on plans from the regional planning commissions, that their formal advisor, you know, their formal bodies, the commissions themselves, then I think the project includes the perception of, you know, it's very likely that there could be state policy implications that would support these nine regional plans, but...
Back on the boxes for a second, we've been, we have been talking about events to bring them to, like the Hampton Seagull Festival, for example, sort of thing, and we want, we did want to, and coast buses was another thought, that, you know, we somehow put them either on the bus or at bus stops or something. But also wanted to engage and get some feedback from the advisory committee about places where you think, and maybe get your help in actually delivering them in some cases, get some help with that, especially thoughts about things that we may be not thinking about. Because we, to answer your question, Barbara, we thought these boxes could live a long time, you know, through, through much of the course of doing this project. If they stay in the same place, you know, for a long time, they get, they'll become invisible, and we have to keep them moving into different places, and maybe combine them with a little, I've thought about creating a little display, tabletop display that would go with them, so when we went to the Hampton Seagull Festival, we would, you know, display about the project and the box.
So a couple suggestions. How about each box having a schedule, a calendar, so that you say, first week in August, it's going to be in this location?
Travel box.
Yeah, and so maybe so that you, it gets to the places where people congregate in a way that's informal, when they can maybe actually do something. My other recommendation is, do I, do I use this for practice? This is the brand, and I guess it's going to be the top of the box.
Yeah, it's a backboard, too, it's...
What I want to suggest is that if you think of this as a flyer as well, that it go to planning boards, boards of selectmen, groups, in, I'm talking about quantities now, which is not a costly thing to do overall, but if it comes to my planning board, I have it in their packets. It becomes a part of the agenda, and the chair will describe, or ask me to describe, what is this all about, and you can say, please look for this logo, and look for the boxes, and get your two sets worth in. And by the way, at www-whatever, this is, this is how you can do this online, and you've done that before. So that's my suggestion, and I think you will find it. The reinforcement of seeing the brand, which is the purpose of the brand, has got to be recurring. It won't happen just once, someone will walk by or say, gee, you know, you know, but you need somehow to get the word out that describes the purpose, and how it's going to be, how the information is going to be used, so that type of technique.
I don't know if anybody's seen, the Portsmouth Chamber has been working on something they call Street Life, and I confess I haven't dug deep into, you know, exactly what it's all about, it's more than just their annual dinner, like they do an annual get-together, but the messaging around it has been different people, you know, mostly sort of notable in some way, or recognizable, sort of community leaders or business people, whatever, standing with either a quick video clip, because they're using a lot of media outlets, or just standing in front of, you know, a notable landscape background, you know, of Portsmouth, with a sign that says "Street Life" on it, you know, and they're using that as sort of like, it's on the move, and people's interest is culminating for what is actually going to be a dinner in the middle of Market Street, closing off the street, and they're literally setting up tables and guests, you know, for the length of the street, for how many people choose to buy tickets, but that's the buzz that they're creating, is having sort of recognizable faces. And when you talk about, you know, beauty parlors and other things, you know, there are probably some, you know, some characters around our communities, that if you saw an image of them even kind of holding the box, and that's part of some kind of ongoing branding thing, your sort of, your interests, your trust in that person, who, you know, people have deep relationships with, whoever might pour their coffee daily, or they cut their hair, you know, you automatically got a great endorsement if that person can really buy into it, and a nice visual, you know, through social media, other platforms, you know, the box is on the move, you know, I mean, I think the fun of sort of where will it be next, you know, I think there's a lot of, a lot that could be played up through this, you know, people really...
Yes, and in terms of those individuals you refer to, in addition to that very, very smart idea about, you know, using them as part of the marketing, they're also crucial, and there's an unlimited number of them, as messengers. Like I said, the person who runs the shop, who said you put the box here, they're an ambassador for this project, and so can, you know, the first set of ambassadors really are this advisory committee, but then everybody you talk to can do the same thing. The echo effect is what I call it in our work, you know, if you tell a good story, people are going to be inclined to repeat it, so...
Yeah, it needs to be sort of non-traditional messengers, I think, is how we get out of just sort of, you know, talking back to ourselves, and, you know, choir's already here, we all sort of can speak planning talk, and, you know, but you get someone who would never use those words in an ordinary sentence, you know, who's your sort of evangelist for taking in public input, I think, and will love, love for them. To that point, I wanted to ask you a question about, you know, my feelings, that, you know, the stakes have never been higher to get this kind of process right, and that I think our region has had its first example of public kind of outcry linked to the Agenda 21 stuff, and I don't know if you, you know, follow that, or maybe it would be worth explaining to the group, but a process in Dover, neighboring community of Strasser County, they hired a consultant to help them through what they were calling Dover 2023, celebrating their three-hundred, or I don't know, some key, key anniversary for the town, for the city, you know, I thought using all the right avenues, maybe not as in-depth as this, to try to seek public input through meetings and such, then comes time to present it out to the public, and some naysayers, and, as you say, the media really elevated that piece to make for a lively story, maybe it's overblown, but it really discredited the process, and I think we're going to very much struggle now to adopt the plan, and that was the, that wasn't in the end what the goal was. And so I, I think that's a real close home or cautionary tale about what do we do to avoid what may, to the gentleman left, appear to be, you know, a lot of consensus around something, but what about the four people out of this ninety people who could come to a meeting and completely disrupted and discredited, and, you know, when a plan is involved, I feel like, are we trying to get to consensus? Who's going to make the call in the end that says, sorry, four people, you know, this is better, or this is what the consensus was, knowing that's still enough for them to claim for us?
Yeah, well, I have been working with a lot of folks who have been seeing this kind of action that you described, and part of it, you, you just implied, a big part of it, is that very often it's a question of turnoff, you know, eleven or twelve people show up and say, this is a bad idea, I'm fully against it, and nobody who thinks it's a good idea shows up. Well, that's, that's puts the elected officials in a difficult position at best, even if intellectually they know, you know, that that's the case, still. So that's part of it, I think, is that quality of engagement. I think part of it is staying focused on actual places, I mean, there's a lot of difference in political philosophies, and ideologies, and ideas about how the world ought to be organized, and those differences are, you know, are fine, they're not really an obstacle to figuring out whether or not we should put a stop sign on that corner. If we keep the conversation about the stop sign on the corner, then there's still going to be differences, there's going to be people who say, no, we shouldn't have a stop sign on the corner, people will say, yes, then we're going to make some kind of decision about whether or not to put a stop sign there, but it's not going to involve, you know, what's my faith or my political philosophy, that's just not, not in it, you know, so that's part of what we, what we need to do. And then a third piece that we've been recommending, or actually a couple of these we've been recommending, but one of them is this, is that, especially for our elected officials, it's very important for them to be able to distinguish between political philosophy and belief, and defending public process. Sometimes, because this group is such a small minority, their main tactic is to try to shut things down, and we need to make sure that political officials who may agree with the, with the objectives of that minority, feel strong enough and confident enough to say, you know, this is a democracy, we need to hear from everybody, which means we need to have a meeting with this. So if you're going to disrupt this meeting, that is actually a form of, I wouldn't ask open elected officials, say, this is the way I would respect, but a form of violence against our democracy, and so that's not acceptable. Your opinions are acceptable, but there's certain behaviors that are not acceptable, so, you know, so it's a, you know, there's that combination. But really, I think the main thing that's pertinent to this project is keep the focus on the stop sign, not do you believe in stop signs or not, but would we be better off if there's a stop sign on this corner or not?
Yeah, two things, first of all, not to belabor the point of this current discussion, but in Windham, we went through a similar circumstance, it dragged through three selected meetings for about a total of six hours, would you say, Cliff? Cliff was, Cliff used to have hair before us, but it was just really, it was appalling. And after going all through it, and having the right people there to answer the questions, this group just basically said, we don't believe what we're to say. Part two, is there going to be a press kickoff statewide for this process? Are you going to identify, like, the major media outlets, like a Channel 9, or a Laura Canoys program on the Hampton Public Radio, and vehicles like that, where you have massive exposure to it, so people will be conditioned to look for it?
Well, so that kind of publicity is waiting until the public listening sessions are scheduled. Okay. Okay. Yes?
Is there any opportunity to change the questions, I'm sorry?
No, very good.
Is there any opportunity to change the questions on the card as the process goes on? Do you find that there's something new that you'd like to know?
Yeah, and as it gets more detailed, the questions are going to have to become more...
That is anticipated, well...
And maybe then a release, hey, the questions have changed, go back to the box.
I envision, maybe the box could have a Twitter.
That's a great idea.
I'm moving to New York.
Well, I'm sure you have, we're going to have a website, which is, so having a blog attached to the website is a really good idea.
Yes.
As Cliff will tell you, I'm often entering, the concern I have about the strategy of communication and getting input for communication ultimately is what you want, that I've heard, strikes me as very, for example, let me say, going to the food festival at Hampton, my guess is seventy percent of the people are from Massachusetts. Among the thirty percent that are from New Han, I'll say Massachusetts and other states than New Hampshire, of the thirty percent from New Hampshire, about fifteen of that, fifteen points of that thirty point thing are kids, you know, I'm just saying, it's kind of, it's, it is a random method of getting what you want. Similarly, having boxes that peregrinate, it will get random input. Is the budget large enough to do saturation solicitation? For example, saturation, bulk mailing, or better yet, if you can find the electronic mailing list, saturate people with email addresses in Rockingham County, in the region, and with links to the website, links to the questionnaire. I think you will get, you get much better input for, I mean, my sense is, the peregrinating box is clever but not coaching. is the peregrinating box is clever but not coaching.
You know, that raises something, I think that the issue of the randomness of it and the sort of anecdotalness of it is something that I have thought about too and we have started discussing at the sort of statewide level about the fact that we have not programmed into this and I think there's an agreement now that we will, an actual statewide or, or I think it will be statewide, it's the only way we can afford it, scientifically based sample of opinions and take it in such a sample that there can be different questions in different regions and still have a statistically valid result. So that we have, in addition to this anecdotal responses, we also have some scientifically, you know, conducted survey that will help us understand what, what, I don't know if that gets at the issue, but I think both are good.
I'd say that's additive to what I was suggesting, because I, I think by the, the peregrinating boxes, what you're trying to do is stimulating public interest and involvement as well as, as just gathering the input, but I think with more of an approach, sample, scientific sample and sampling, I'm sure that the UNH survey center could do a wonderful job, that's great, that should be, that, that should be a center of whatnot, if that isn't done, then none of the data you gathered is out. But the, the other, the, I think doing the saturation mailing, whether it's electronic, I would say both, electronic, bulk mailing, get people involved is, is going to be, I mean, it's, it's also something that will be more effective with the box.
Jeremy, spin that rating. Thanks, thanks. I think, I would agree to some extent that having boxes in places where people congregate can be a bit random, especially, I mean, I know they're just examples, but, you know, the laundromat or, you know, the burrito place or whatever is good, but you're going to get a fairly random sample, but it's easy to put the boxes in those places. I would say that one thing that Twitter and Facebook have shown us is not that, not just that people want to be connected and whatever, but that they're looking for a distraction from work, because most people are on Twitter and Facebook all day while they're at their desk. And so I would contend that one of the best places for the boxes to go would be the teacher's lounge, the break room at Lonza, the, you know, just any place where you've got a lot of people at work and it's, it's different where you walk around in a big city at lunchtime and everybody's rushing from the office to noodle house to grab lunch and back and you've got these people with clipboards on the street who are, you know, campaigning for children of Africa or whatever and nobody stops to talk to them because they're taking up your lunchtime, it's like, yeah, I don't want to listen to your whole spiel. The beauty of the box is, is you don't have to listen, you know, listen to a whole spiel, you can grab a card, fill it out and drop it off later, or you can think about it, or if it's in your break room, you get a bunch of teachers talk about it and like, oh, hey, that's a really cool thing. Those are the people who, who, what's the phrase I'm looking for? Those are the people who support in silence, they're the people who don't come to public meetings because they're exhausted from a whole day of dealing with our wonderful young folk and then they get home and they have to grade papers and they don't want to go to city halls, they might have it on TV in the background, but, you know, they, they all, and I know because I grew up in this household, they all think, God, what a bunch of yahoos, I wish they would stop going up to the public comment at the city council meeting and making things worse for the poor guys who are up there who've also worked a whole day and are just sitting there quietly listening. But those are the people whose input I think we want just as much as we want everybody else's and I, I think we have to be careful about saying things like yahoos and outliers, obviously, but, you know, in a saying jest. Those are the kinds of groups that I think are really crucial to get into this process along with everybody else and I think that's a, a real good way to do it and I'm sure the tough thing for us is that most of us work in the public sector or, you know, as appointed commissioners and all that kind of thing, our connections tend to be more at the public level, but we all know somebody who is a teacher or who works at the trade board or the shipyard or wherever who, you know, we can sort of do a little bit of guerrilla infiltration and say, can you get this box in your break room? So I think that's a.
I think that's a nice, I'm finding that it raises a related point, which is this, this, this method was never conceived to be a scientific sample of anything, but one of the advantages of it is that it makes it possible to target groups of people, for example, teachers or the employees at some major employer, you know, of a certain type in terms of the industries, you know, that, that it becomes possible. The people who have, who are residents of subsidized housing, low-cost housing, you know, where there's a community room, you could say, well, how would we get to those people? Well, we could go up to where they live, you know, and use the existing communications channels and, and local leaders, you know, the, the, the people who have referred, you know, as our messengers to, to do this and, and so that's a, and one of the other, in one of the other regions, speaking of teachers, somebody suggested that teachers, both at the elementary and the high school level, may be interested in making a little bit of a civics or social studies unit out of this, that they could, if they choose, if they're presented it and asked to, they could say to the kids, take three or four or five of these cards home and ask your mom and dad and brothers and sisters to fill it out and bring it back tomorrow, that's homework.
Yeah, and that was one of the strengths of the Dover 2023 project, that, that I was one of the facilitators for that project and, and in the middle of it, we all kind of said to the consultant and the, the city staff, you need to take advantage of the school year before it's over and they did, they went to the high school civics courses and, and did a presentation and got those kids involved and, and that was exactly what that process needed.
I think the boxes serve a purpose in that it gives the demographic that are not computer savvy the opportunities to comment, one of the logical locations to it, boxes is town offices, tax collector, town clerk, because you get a constant flow of people going through, it represents all the demographic in the community.
That's okay, I will, I want to suggest that one of the important purposes that the box will serve is that a lot of people will walk right by it, you know, don't do this kind of thing, they won't touch it, but they will see the brand. And having the brand out there so that people get used to it is a key to, for example, if you're in a group that has some recalcitrants in it that are causing disruption, if the other people there don't really know what you're talking about, have no, no visual contact, you're at a tremendous disadvantage. And to that extent, I would, I would suggest that be some thought given to widespread use of media to help, to help get the brand out. This is New Hampshire and it has a, it has a real parochial way of going about things and people need some time to get used to it, to get used to something new, so that's my suggestion.
That's what Peter was suggesting and I don't know, Michael, what about timeframe? When he said when the statewide listening session start, that's when.
Yeah, that's when the thinking.
And that's going to happen.
I don't think, in the fall, I think, I haven't been given any kind of date, so.
That the media piece would really up when the listening session.
And the same thing, that it could be simultaneous perhaps.
The early discussion was October, but I know that there was some, the Casey Institute had talked about starting it with an October date and then quite a few people thought that was too late to get a start, but that's the last I had heard.
The local, local news media, it is, the recommendation is to start with the placement of the boxes, to be using, you know, local town newsletters, local blogs and so.
I agree with that, I thought you were saying that you just didn't want to do that, but you have to have your message, the statewide message is what has to get across to you. So that, that material, that rationale has to be in place before you put the box out, that's my suggestion. The other thing is that, following Phil's suggestion, UNH has did a survey for Seabrook that turned out to be a quite good response and they, the questions are, get you some consistent response, they're really good at it and you know the guys that do that there, it costs us $500 and it doesn't matter how many, you know, places, how, how many, how many emails you send, do you see what I'm saying? So you might, you might consider the benefit of having a bit more organized approach, seeking responses that would get you some consistency, it doesn't mean that you get, everybody says the same thing, that's not at all what happens, but you get a consistent categories of responses and that was really important.
Are the boxes going to function at all as a way to get some initial categories of things that would then be formed as questions in the, in the input sessions? I mean, is that going to help sort of distill maybe some sense of things that are bubbling up and that should be tested in those listening sessions?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, I think that is the idea. You know, the reason that it starts with such broad questions specifically is so that if there are things that are on folks' minds that have not been thought about by the commissions, that they become aware of them, because they're clear with them, they respond to this.
One, one, just as, within this conversation, the suggestion, before the boxes go out, give the flyers out there, from the supermarkets, have them in here. Sheriff, can you, can you put it on your, on your bus?
Sheriff, can you arrange it?
Do you see what I'm saying? Just, just the brand, you don't have to tell anybody what it is, but that gets the idea out there and then when the box is on the table, they have, they, they've seen something before, so it will, it has some validity, that's my suggestion.
I think the idea was also that the box was going to have a, a holder for brochures or something like that.
Well, I understand that, I'm, I'm, my, my point, I'm trying to get a box with branding and that's, that's a part of what you do with branding, you get the brand out there, you don't care if they know what it is or not, but they are seeing it so that when you do come to them and want a substantive response, it is familiar and that's, I would just suggest that that kind of thinking would be a consideration.
I would respectfully disagree, that if I looked at a brand and didn't have any information about what it was, the next time I saw it, I likely won't find, because I would associate that with, I looked at that, I didn't get any information, why I'm looking at it again. So I don't know if it's the best strategy to put it out there without an explanation.
Well, if you had it out there and it said, watch, watch for the, watch for something, you know, watch for the box, watch for something, do you know what I mean?
Yeah, I guess we wanted to build some sort of anticipation.
Just to kind of go along with the debate about collecting input, I, I know that in our region over the last couple of years, whether it was with the RPCs or throughout my consultants, many of our committees have updated master plan chapters, like revision chapters and others, which we probably glean a lot of public input and information from those. I can think of probably a dozen committees, including Seabrook, Sandown, where we can get that recent, recent input on a lot of these issues that we are, we see, so I'd admit some of those listening boxes with this local, recent local information.
I think that's really important for another reason too and that is, I think, and as someone gets to the next agenda item about, you know, thinking about our audiences and I think there is an audience, it's multiple audiences, but one of our audiences is our, our communities and the land use boards, the planning boards in our communities and I think it's going to be helpful if they know that we have gone out and looked at the input they've already received and they've already based some of their plans on, that they know that we have read that and seen that and incorporated, so that's a, that's a very, and it's also easy to do, you know, those, those, those master plan surveys and the chapters in the master plan that goes with them, that's one of the elements that's required in every master plan is, is some form of public input, so they all have it and it's all documented and we can, we can get.
I want to interrupt just part two of Mike, which was one of the, we were just talking about, but also the question of the, in the comments that Peter and Lisa made about these two communities, communities who have actually taken rather innovative steps in the last couple of years, Windham with their lawsuit project and adoption of your, was it the Indian Water Protection District in Lake recently? And the city of Dover, an innovative community, an award-winning community, in that the instances where a small group of opposition can derail or invalidate a long history of innovation and, and planning and I think that the communities need to kind of beef up their own confidence and look forward to those actions that they've already taken and that are on the books and that voters have supported in the past to, to maybe not so much refute this, this opposition, particularly what you talked about, Michael, when there's only ten people in opposition, you know, wasn't in opposition and none of the supporters are present, rely on your record, even as communities, what have you done in the past, where do you see yourself heading? Rely on those master plans as, as, as a way to, to support your positions and maybe even as part of this project, we should serve, maybe inventory some of those more innovative and actions that communities have taken over the last five years to address some of these issues, these topical issues that our regional commanders have been taking, to show sort of what the pulse of our, of our region has there and the direction that it, that it already is starting to, to take already. So this is my comment about your, your communities is don't, you know, rely on your strengths and your successes because those are what will lead your community forward.
Thanks. One of the things, a couple, two little comments, one, I wouldn't underestimate the, the power of branding. I mean, my, my sister, she works as a, I guess what we call it, as Director of External Communications for Northeast Delta Medical. When they started putting ads in papers and things, hey, buy dental insurance, you know, whatever, nobody showed up for it, but once she started, people started seeing the logo on, on the side of the ball field where they walked into the stadium, it just was a triangle that, and they started, business started to boom because people started recognizing, seeing it and what was it, it was a political ad that I heard or a political story about ads, you know, somebody has to see the ad three, four, five, six times for the message to get home, yes.
It's going down. It used to be three, now it's five.
Right, so, so it's, yeah, so anyway, but the other thing is too is, I think there's always that big fear of the smaller minority that are able to scuttle any great or good effort. I think we'll, we'll, we'll get a panel on that on August twenty first, which is the roll out of the Stratum Exeter Cooperative Water and Source Study. I mean, I think it would be great, I would invite everybody and anybody in this room to come see it, because I think what you're going to see is there's some really good work that's been done, but you're going to see this, this real dynamic happening there about, you know, we don't like this, we're not going to like it, but okay, it's a really good thing for everybody. So I think that, that would be a good opportunity for people to see and, you know, people.
In, in our last EPO meeting, we saw a little bit of this and I would just kind of reiterate that when you have a sort of organized opposition that is, you know, I, there, there's some philosophical under-pinions to that opposition that I happen to agree with, I don't agree with their tactics, but I know when you're opposing them, you are better off if your argument is underlaid by sound data. And you said facts, you don't, facts don't tell you anything? I'm sorry, sir, to you, I said full story. Facts are friendly, facts are what you use to refute an argument that you disagree with and admittedly, the way you organize those facts is very important, but without scientific underpinnings for the conclusions that this study wants, this project wants to come up with, people are going to look at the results that are derived from the box, boxes as jerry-rigged data, you are collecting anecdotes you could use to bolster the positions you had already decided you wanted to take, rather, but if you have a study from UNH, Gallup, some, some bona fide surveying organization that shows that the conclusions you're coming to are appropriate, then you're great. I think you've got something you can, you could talk to people about, because we're fundamentally in a debate between individualism and collectivism and that's what this is, philosophically, that's what this is going to come down, it goes all the way back to Plato and Aristotle.
All right, one, one last.
Extending Phil's lines, I mean, on the same track, you described sort of the, if I understood. of the, if I understood it, that all this would be put together, and the planning commissions would have been through all of the process that's important and carefully done as it is, and then the outcomes would be presented to the communities. And I would suggest to you that there's a very important reason to pull the communities into the conversation. Because if you tell them, here's the plan, and they haven't seen it, and it's not theirs, and they don't own it, you're gonna have in the end of three years a total cacophony that will destroy the intent. So I think that has to be carefully programmed into the process.
I didn't mean to imply that these boxes are...
I'm not talking about the boxes. I'm talking about the plan itself. I'm talking about the process. I'm talking about involving the communities and the decision-making groups to start with, to be the selectmen and the planning boards and perhaps conservation commissions, involving them, and taking the time to, I'm gonna say, well, I won't say what I was gonna say, but taking the time to bring them into the participation process and give them the opportunity along the way. And yeah, my planning board, we have a meeting next week. I will take one of these, probably your sheet here, that describes some of the purposes. And I'll put it in my board's packet, and it will get a first look. Same thing with, you know, why I like this, I do the same thing, which actually, curve, to do both together. But when we, in my community, we just did some very innovative zoning changes. Julie was so clear. And people thought at the beginning, this will never happen. No, you know, this panel doesn't do things like that. But it was because of the repeated involvement at the planning board level, and eventually with the board's selectmen, that it went through without a whimper at the town meeting. And that's a lesson. And that's extending what you were saying, that was something I wanted to get across.
Well, again, I think this gets at this agenda item that we're kind of in, I think, which is talking about who the audience is on their, audiences, and how do we approach various aspects of getting engagement, feedback from different groups. And I think the one that we're pretty good at, because they're the groups that we deal with all the time, are planning boards and conservation commissions and the selectmen. And I think it goes without saying that we will have, be having dialogues and opportunities to hear from them and get information out. But I think the thing that's more challenging for us as an organization is getting that kind of feedback from, you know, a broader group. And frankly, I think that isn't something we do a lot of. And in some ways, that's not our constituency. In some ways, we're working for municipal governments. We're working for the towns. And that's who we accustomed, that's who we're accustomed to, to serve, is the municipal boards in those communities. But in this process, I think we wanna get some, we wanna get some broader input than that. And some of it, I think, does need to be sort of scientifically derived, as Phil was talking about. And we'll supplement it with some, you know, some other information.
Last, we're coming up here around 11 o'clock. So last, last question.
In support of what Cliff was saying, one of the things which I had noticed with more articles than I was involved in getting forced to, is the number of times that it came out that there were more people on the petition than there were votes cast for the article. And obviously, it sold nothing about what this was now. They had cut at least broken even, hit up. But it was, and that's happened to me several times in the articles. Now I've learned not to do that. But it's not, it's not an easy thing. And I'm understanding the work that you're talking about is gonna require help from professionals. Because we're being so cold to death in this current national election forum, that there's partisanism.
All right. To cut off the discussion, it's always, it's always nice when you can step back and occasionally do things from the 30,000-foot level. It's got a more technical sense. That's involved, which we can, can do more often. Next item, I need you to schedule our next meeting. Glenn, any thoughts on that?
I mean, we're, at this juncture, we're thinking, well, we, yes, every six weeks or so. But I really, before we have the next meeting, I want to do the solicitations to boards of selectmen, so that we have a better feel for who the actual commissioner representatives will be.
Okay.
Because it's such a big portion of the slate. So I would say at this point, I can't get you to pull out your calendars and do a next, a next date. But we will, the idea is, as we, as this project gets going, we'll bring the advisory committee together more frequently in the first, in the first three months or so, maybe every six weeks or every month for three months, and then go to sort of a quarterly schedule.
So will this be typical meeting time during the day, or if you see?
We've talked about that a little bit at the staff level and...
I'd like to get some feedback about that.
Yeah, I think for, I think for a lot of folks, this is a challenging time to meet. But for some of the, some of the non-commission members, it's a better time to meet.
We suggested layup, right?
Yeah, we have, we have.
That we're at the end of the workday, easier to take time off from work.
How does that, anybody feel that's a good compromise?
I'd rather alternate, you know, because I think, you know, if you were to tell me that I'm gonna miss dinner with my family every single time, you know, to do it at 4:00 or whatever, you know, or pick up my son from childcare, you know, that would be tough. But if you told me occasionally other times, maybe during the birthday or...
So maybe, maybe you alternate between, from morning or afternoon meetings, then evening, or evening.
Do you have them around or have them here?
I think we may, we will, I think there's a lot more space. So maybe the Exeter Library or the Novak Room may be the places we need to.
And as we get more commissioner representation, because that becomes a large segment, we may go to something more central in our region, like Kingsville or Brownwood.
Soon as we get more attendance.
And can I ask a question then about future meetings? That, you know, we talked about one outreach strategy today, but I'm assuming that not all the other strategies have been nailed down yet. That a lot of what our input is gonna be is sort of how to structure that and where are the other avenues for doing that. So I think clearly there's a lot of thought on the table that we got one place to start, but there's a lot more to think through and learn from other experiences. I'd love to hear more of a download about Dover's experience, because I think that's the closest, most recent process that we have to compare.
One last chance for anyone. Question?
You have an excellent idea. What I've noticed is that you, you find that the opposition that you're getting at these meetings is a large part of your problem. But I see no direct engagement with that group. Now, I could certainly organize for you to be a liaison between you, Grand State Future Agreement, and that specific opposition group. So you can lay out the facts. Let them hear those facts. Because you can't adjust to that unless you know what they are. Correct. You have to know what your opposition is thinking before you can figure out how to answer it. But I see no direct engagement with that. So I would welcome that, the ability to be that liaison, to get the information out, the facts. Because on the outside, this may appear more of a manipulation, or like you're saying, branding and stuff. I don't think the public appreciates branding in, when it comes to their private property and land resource management. I think it would be a better thing to do is to engage their, their concerns directly. Find out, list them, find out what they are, what their, what their issues are.
Yeah, and actually, that is input we want. That is something we need to, we need to incorporate in our thinking. So, you know, let's talk about how to...
Follow up. What I would also advise you to do is, before you have the meeting that gentleman spoke of in Exeter, the sewer, is have this summit before that. So when those opposition groups show up in that meeting, they will be basing their opposition or agreement with the facts. Because if you don't approach them and get to the bottom of it, you're gonna consistently hear it. So you really need to get to the, get to the facts of the entire agreement.
I'd be surprised that that, that meeting is really just about Exeter and Stratum's discussion, why that would be.
Would you like an answer to that?
Yeah.
The perception is, with the small number of people I've talked to about this, is that this is an effort to impose on individual municipalities and individuals a state, regional perspective on the way to manage particularly sewer systems, which are seen as a means of promoting what many of you, including myself, as, and I'm not saying I agree with everything I said just before, but this last point I agree with. Sewers promote excessive development, which to my, my belief is incompatible with the whole purpose of this, sustainable development. I have seen community after community and state after state implement things which are designed to promote development in the name of, used to be something other than sustainable development. The words changed, as Michael said. But what it has resulted in is excessive development and the lack of livability. And, I mean, the poster child for this is the state of New Jersey, where Mount Laurel, 1, 2, and 3, or whatever it is, I've heard. And now there are communities there that people, you simply can't live in. You can live in them, I mean, don't be hyperbolic about it, but it's very inconvenient.
You know, what I was referring to is the scope of the Exeter-Stratum thing was that those two towns, it has nothing to do with us. We were asked just to be the, sort of the facilitator, we were asked to be, it's not part of this.
No, I understand, Cliff, that you're, you're trying to look at this through a telescope or a tool. You're seen as the facilitator of a process, which is, the first step of which is engaging these two communities. That is something that can expand to the entire region. And you do have regional opinion, your planning commission name. That's, I mean, it's just, and I think this gentleman's comment is right. Engage, engage the opposition, find out what they're all about, and believe they are. I think there are some very good ideas in the thinking, but as long as all is it is, as long as it's a discussion rather than a dialogue, it's gonna continue to be a disruption of everything. You know, you have to understand what your opposition is, because all of their ideas are not bad.
I think you're right on, hit the nail on the head, Phil, about collectivism versus individualism. That's really, that's what we're seeing bubble up when there's, when there's contention around planning issues, community issues. That's what I'm seeing is like the major, you know, and so then, so it's weird, you know, so there is a, there are fundamental values and sort of political attachments to those different viewpoints. But I think the general bias going in is that anything dealing with planning and community could be a threat to individualism. And so just even understanding, even this group's sort of understanding the literature, understanding those viewpoints, if it's not, not one that you carry, you know, just educating ourselves about where's that coming from, where, you know, there's a deeper appreciation, a better ability to stimulate a dialogue. So I don't think it necessarily, I think step one is for us to understand some things, you know, that can be garnered through sort of literature that's emerging about different viewpoints around this, and then to the actual individuals in our region that feel that way.
Okay. I think I'm gonna cut off the conversation. We can always continue after the meeting, but it is 10 after 11. So I suppose you'll need to run outside and move your car when it's 12:00, when it expires.
That's our planning horizon.
I'd like to, like to thank Michael for really explaining the presentation and some insightful thoughts about communication. So thank you, Michael, and I hope we see you again in the future.
And thank you all again.
Yes, thank you for that.
During the meeting.
No, actually not.
The thing I want to say, in response to what you said, is that whenever I get in touch with these people who are just planning, who serve my individual rights, my property, I say, well, what if you were to make a, 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 a,